Okay, let's move to order. I'll just do anyone who is not concerned that we are five minutes behind schedule. Sorry, not sorry. Okay, so here we are. Let's start with the call to order. And we, oh, first just perhaps introduce, um, I will call the order. Is there not? Okay, well, it's you first.
Rick, Rick Goddard.
Jessica Giles.
Victoria Roman. Awesome. Just wait a second. Cal, or?
With us is Colin from, who will say his last name, which is?
Sobinski.
Sobinski, so easy. From MRB, also our village attorney, Guy Crowe. And Morgan Wright is our deputy clerk. Also joining us today, we'll move right into that, there's the call to order, is Steph Bailey, who has been, is our recently appointed planning board alternate. So she will be sitting in our meetings as much as she can. And so to be impressed of what the planning board does and is here to help in the case of the absence of a planning board member, by the way, stepping down, so resigning or recusal, which would be, oh, this is actually, I don't know, my business interest and I shouldn't be part of this happening here. Steph is in there to say, okay, all right, you speak. Plus, she's just a junkie for planning. Aren't we all?
Aren't we all?
Steph, do you want to make your voice heard?
Hello. Happy to be here.
There is me.
Thanks. This is a support group. It's actually the zoning review committee, which you are on, so. Okay, great. Thank you, Steph, for stepping up to support your community.
Really big deal.
Okay. So let's move on to the approval of minutes. If there are more than 28 minutes. The person? Oh, okay, so there is an update from the March 28th meetings, which was noted, I think, by John, that MRB had been missing. And announced there for the officials present at the meeting that was changed about that. Not even even know. So is there a motion to approve the amended minutes of March 28th to recognize the presence of MRB?
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Excellent. Approved. Okay, and now we have the minutes from April 25th. Mine's April 25th.
Okay.
Thank you, Morgan, for the extra detail there to pack a few minutes in the past two months. Nice addition. Thank you. I think also beneficial to the public who can't make it but wants to stay first. No way, we adjourned at 8:30? Okay. Great. And soon we noted here a bit of old business about thanking the tree planters, which we'll get to on this agenda. I know that he's ready for that. So, does anyone notice anything? A motion to approve of the minutes of April 25th, 2019?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Okay, minutes are approved. Okay, so here we are, and we have a recent, I guess not so recent, feels recent, May 6th submittal from the applicant relating to the stormwater. Oh, I think it's hours, the applicants here. Hello. Hi, you, excellent, thank you, applicants. But before you get into it, because I know you, you didn't have to be here last month by mutual consent and awesomeness, so you're eager, lots of things to say. I just wanted to point out, as we move forward and we're looking at all these things and we talk about this stormwater submittal came and MRB is the engineer's reactions and comments that the village attorney has, that this is also largely a working session, like every meeting is, but sometimes, some meetings were fully prepared for and things just move. And sometimes we're really using this time to have a discussion, to get questions answered, and there is absolutely nothing wrong with that. It's actually really good. So any sense of, oh, this new material is, yep, new material, great, let's discuss it. Okay? Adam, it looks like you'd like to say something.
So for the record, my name is Adam Walters, I'm an attorney at Phillips-Sutter, representing the applicants. The, it was, actually, it was April 18th, our submittal, which was, no, later we had stormwater accounts that was sent in. They had on MRB earlier. So on April 18th, we submitted our updated site plans. They were really based on our, that our in-depth review, really since November, and a lot of back and forth dialogue with the board of the site plan layout, and of course, that you're encouraged, we went through some of the appeals and those variances, all of which led into the final design that was part of this plan. Everything in this plan went through a detailed stormwater analysis. And Andy really took all of those conceptual plans we put together and refined everything in terms of rating and drainage, to make sure that the stormwater system is up to the charge. We've always described it as robust. In these calculations, it actually got slightly there, so it's even more robust. And the second submittal was the actual calculations. Again, if you're a stormwater calculations junkie, there's a lot of interesting stuff in there. That, the concept we had was MRB would then review everything as your engineer and give us a comment. That kind of led it came out last Wednesday. And I think our only goal for tonight is really just, we have a couple of things we wanted to kind of discuss with MRB and kind of get your reaction on some of the comments. Some things, we just kind of want to delve in and get some clarification, so that we can put in what I would call final updated plans, addressing each of the comments that we got from MRB.
Great.
So, without further ado, I think the first comment we wanted to discuss was number five on the MRB letter.
And everyone, Morgan, or Colin, actually, someone distributed the MRB comments that we had received in earlier, since we have this in front of you. Does anyone not have that? Okay, thank you.
This one says, architectural renderings, including materials in color, are to be provided for each building type, including the garages. Building elevations for each building type should also be provided. So, we have various plans in various stages of development, right? We've got the market rate houses. Those are the houses that Claudia will be developing down the road. So, the idea is she's going to market those lots, and as buyers come in, she will design their homes for them. So there will be no architectural rendering specific to the market rate houses, no garage designs. What we had talked about previously was, every one of those projects, as they get developed, will come in as a site plan amendment.
Right, okay.
And so the board will get its deep dive and detailed review.
To make sure it's in keeping with the area and current, yeah, this application.
Exactly. And one of the things we did, in order to give Claudia what I think is an appropriate level of flexibility, if a client comes in and wants a really large house, well, we'd have to upsize the stormwater system, which was built several years ago. That wouldn't make any sense. So we created what I'd call some standard assumptions about lot coverage. And Andy basically, that's one of the reasons the stormwater retention basically got a little fewer. Andy assumed that there would be a certain percent of lot coverage, and I think it was 20%?
15.
15% of lot coverage. That would be for a house and a garage, paving, all impervious surfaces, if you will. Nothing specific, it's kind of over conservative. But we just thought that was a good way to approach it, and make sure the stormwater system is well-designed and can handle any development. Anything above that would sort of be a reopen error from a seeker perspective.
So if they submit a site plan and the lot coverage is greater than 15%, then it would reopen seater?
It would, and it would be an issue you really have to make sure is addressed from a stormwater handling perspective. But we thought that's a good safe way to go into this, because again, those plans are not going to be used for a while. So, I think the nursery school is also, is still in design. And Claudia, things have been progressing?
Yes. Yes.
Do we expect we will have final plans before June's meeting?
No.
Okay. So, the nursery school will also be something that will come back to the board, and we would ask that as part of the approval, there be a specific condition that when those drawings are done, they come to the board for review.
Okay.
Everything else, will we do?
Also the affordable for sale.
The affordable for sales?
Yes.
Will or won't?
They will not be ready.
They will not be ready. You're still working through the HVAC systems and energy, that's going to affect the design step. I forgot.
No, no, it's okay. Not on those, we just, we have a little bit more time for applying for funding on those, so it's got pushed out a little bit, but we'll have those very soon.
Right. So, and we also ask, on those for-sale affordability, they will come back to you. So, what does that mean? That leaves the for-sale rentals and the two buildings. The design work, we've already seen quite a bit of, but we don't have final time schedules yet. We will be submitting those shortly as part of our update with the MRB comments.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yep.
Okay, so that's number five, and that's how we will mark them.
Okay, I thought it was about one second, sorry.
Just one little thing on that. Elevations for the, sorry, Frank, I'm blanking here. The large apartment dwelling?
Yes.
I have not seen any that specifically call up a lot of heights that people can see.
Well, that's all.
I just want to see those, and I want to make sure that the board is happy with what they see, with what they perceive so far, and they're happy with how things are going to progress with.
In terms of height?
Yeah, okay, and that makes sense. We were at a point where we could have really rushed to get those in with this submittal in April, and thought, eh, the real effort here needs to be on the engineering.
So you're saying that, and so there's, for June, will not be ready for sale affordable home drawings and completed nursery school drawings. For June, will be ready, affordable rentals, they just aren't as such.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it. Should we, since we're in architectural and building materials, maybe has brought a fence, railing around.
Good dredge and railing.
Well, let's, I see if I'm still good dredging.
Excellent. There'll be no railing. None shall pass.
Maybe one.
The highlights, highlights, full 100% aluminum. We're going to do square pickets.
One floor aluminum.
Yep. Full aluminum. The style that'll actually do, the sample that was only available to me for this one is, it'll have every other top picket, so imagine every other one is tall, so it won't be as tall, or feel as tall.
In the top and not at the bottom.
Yep, just only in the top, it'll have every other one.
The lower ones will be as we see it. And the color choices are?
White.
Just white?
Well, there are multiple color choices, but the color schemes for the buildings themselves, the white and the trim, and it'll tie everything together.
But it is available, is not?
It is available on our vehicles. And it's all power coat finished.
What's the life expectancy of that coat?
It's got a lifetime warranty on it.
Lifetime?
Yep.
Of the fence or the person?
So, do you want that, what?
So the picture that we have, then, which does show the pickets on the top.
Every other one. That's the correct style there. The only sample that they had for me had every picket at the top. That's the correct one.
Well, the good thing is aluminum does last.
Yes.
Okay.
Pressure very certain does not.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yep.
So we'll leave this up here, if anybody wants to just come over and touch and feel it is, is.
And where is, and how much of this is supposed to go, like where?
Uh, is it all the porches?
All the porches?
Yep. So on the multifamily building, it'll be on ground floor, all the unit porches that are there, and then townhomes, same thing, will have, I think we're going to do all the wraparound, so it'll actually have a wraparound fence on it. Wraparound.
I have a question that might not be answerable without Tom here or Tammy, because Morgan is amazing, but also new to that organization. Can we call it a village and organization? Anyway, how will we be sure that in 15 years, when the final, let's say, fire goodness, if this all happens, and you have to wait 15 years to finish your four market sale houses, that we recognize that this should trigger a seater? What mechanism is in place to raise that flag?
So, really good question. What you're going to have at the end of the day is an approved site plan for the entire project.
Yep.
Anytime you modify the site plan, you've done a seeker review for that approved site plan. So, down the road, if there's a modification to the site plan, other than, and again, I'm talking inconsistent with what's been approved, so there's, again, from a planning perspective, there's an assumption of 15% higher, if you were to go above that.
So that's like sort of a note that gets tagged with the site, and when everyone goes to review that, this goes, what are all the notes in the record?
Exactly. So your final approved plans that will be signed by everybody, we'll have those in construction notes.
Okay, okay.
How it's done. We can also, you've got a lot of flexibility, some boards like to call it out as conditions of approval.
Right. You reviewed that last month, which may be about 10 minutes or more, but it's.
So that can be another good way to highlight it for future boards.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Just for reference, when we talked about the stormwater, the lot coverage, 15 is plenty for anything I can imagine. And if a client came and were to want more than that, and wanted to go through the hassle and expense of going through the seeker, it would be highly unlikely. So I have no trepidations at all. Just for reference, I mean, on the size lots that we have, 15% is a lot. You would have to work very hard.
To cover that amount.
So I don't feel like it's a dangerous number at all. It just gives me flexibility if someone wants a barn in the back, or someone wants garage, you know, more garage, then we typically show our smaller, you know, smaller footprints. So, but there's absolutely no, I cannot imagine a person wanting to go through the expense of that.
Well, and I'm satisfied that if we all lose our minds and go with management again on the plane, that it'll trigger, hey, the seeker for that.
Right.
Right, okay.
And every lot that's developed, if less than that means there's additional stormwater storage capacity, which has been under the concern.
Okay, and thank you, Claudia.
All right. Next item up, we wanted to discuss was number six, accessible spaces, or maybe you got accessible spaces in the super lots, 2, 4, 8, and 12. Brian, is this year you're going to pick to this one, or?
I'm going to come down the chest.
Okay, so the, when we see your comment.
Yeah. So the suggestion was that additional accessible spaces be provided specifically for those lots. In regards to lot 2, which is an affordable for-sale lot, we would suggest that we already have more spaces on that lot than it would require, so we don't feel like an additional accessible space is strictly necessary. In regards to the ones on lot 4, lot 4.
And I'm sorry, can you please remind me, anybody, that in accessible space, they're all the same width? It's not like we're saying, wheels are accessible in the back, or is larger than standard?
It's the vacant space you need next to it.
An access aisle, but what is worth the access aisle is drawn to the same dimensions that the apartment, they're all nine by 20.
Okay, okay.
Essentially creates an additional space.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so, and I don't think we need to come through a resolution on that tonight, but you want to run through them all, is it?
Sure, yeah. In regards to the ones on, same thing with lot 8, again, put a bit of parking there already. The three-unit buildings on lot 12 and lot 4, so both of those are affordable rental buildings. And those units are required to be visitable, so they need to be, the first floor needs to be accessible to someone in a wheelchair, but no one in a wheelchair will live there because there's a second floor. So, it would purely, those adding an accessible space directly next to those two buildings would purely mean that we were adding visitor space for that. Again, not the end of the world, but we're already looking at quite a bit impervious, so actually, maybe it wasn't certain necessary.
And there are already on lot 12, ADA accessible spaces, not specifically proximate to the townhouse, Tom, on 12, or by code requirement, most proximate to the primary entrance in your multifamily residence, but apartment complex, but there are ADA spaces provided as per law online.
So if I just may also speak to this comment, we understand that the lot of large, that is a suggestion, a lot of hotwoods, they're, you know, elderly residents, they, well, they may not need a wheelchair or anything like that, getting a closer to entrances is good providing generally, and it's a thought of, what if someone does, we're just morphing to impervious, if there is a thought of, eventually, someone does need to request accessibility features, such as a space for themselves, and suddenly you guys need to come and put in new extra stays, we're thinking stormwater perspective, that's extra impervious, let's just, you know, figure that out now, and also, for the board's consideration, however that is, it is a suggestion, for the board's consideration.
Okay.
So there'd be no, would there be any problems? Let's say there's not an accessible space, put an addition at lot 12, if there was a request by somebody, if there needed an accessible space there for whatever reason, would that be the kind of thing that could be converted easily, or would it, what would be required?
Specifically with lot 12, more so than any of the other lots in which we're discussing this possibility, the constraints of the site are severe, for lack of a better term.
Would be hard to do physically.
You'd have to strike out, you'd have to strike out a parking lot, parking spot next to it, so you'd remove the parking spot.
So it would be just turning the existing spot, notably the accessible spot, if you actually. So you're either adding impervious, which can be more challenging, greater, you're also adding a little more extra stormwater, although again, with a 15% extension on lots, a parking space or two over time likely would be just fine, but there'd be some that you'd have to analyze then. So if I'm here, Colin, correct, MRB suggests, then, think about it now, if we're going to do it, let's plan for it, and I think applicants' perspective, we probably have that problem, based on our experience with these things, we think we're fine.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have questions about this, at this time? Okay.
Okay, next two up are 19 and 21, and I think Andy, these are good. Were these just that we think they should be addressed as part of the final plaque?
Yeah, both of these were requesting additional details for bioretention filter, like stone wheels, head wall details, cleaning wall details, which we certainly will have, you know, before it's final, definitely before we go for a building permit and construct this. So it kind of felt preliminary that at that level detail wasn't required, but certainly push that into the, for the final site plan approval phase.
Same thing with 34?
Yes. That was, that was like the head wall.
That was kind of 20?
19, 9, 20, 19, 21, 34.
Okay. So, I'm sorry.
Quick question of 19. I must say that my language, I guess, in this direction is limited enough where by the time I read bioretention for-bay under drains and any number of other concepts, is there any way you could explain that to us in slightly form? In other words, I'm having a hard time grasping that particular one sentence or two.
Sure, sure. Our bioretention filters are the primary filtering component for a portion of the site. The stormwater will flow into these stormwater filters, which is a low sum. It has a planting soil and sand, the water percolate through, the tree water collected and percolate pipe discharged out. Prior to that, a for-bay is just another little hole in the ground prior to the filter. And what it does is allow this water to temporarily pond up, and heavy sediments that are in the water during a rain event settle out. What we don't want to do is, we don't want to clog the filter with heavy sediments.
So it goes through two steps? It has a pre?
It's a pre-filter.
And a pre-filter, and then a final cleaning device.
Correct.
Second phase.
Right, that's pre-filtering, yeah. It's about 25% of the size of the filter, the filter volume requirement is the for-bay is.
And is there, are these cleaned, is there an obligation to keep these, that's part of a maintenance?
Yeah, they're maybe scheduled, cleaning them out, yeah.
I can speak that briefly. They will be required to enter into some sort of a maintenance agreement of such, under your state D C requirements, to ensure that all stormwater facilities are taken care of.
Yeah, in agreement with the village, so the final.
With a very dramatic increase of rain, I mean, I've never seen a spring like this in this area, I think we have to think way ahead of what could possibly happen. So I'm trying to just grasp this particular paragraph there. Thank you.
As I grasp this particular paragraph better, am I understanding that you're saying that that's something, that say there was nothing else, that 19, 21, and 34 could be something we say, great, preliminary plans can be approved with the conditions that these are addressed?
Yes.
Why wouldn't you just address them if what we'd like to do is identify all the things for final draft schedules today?
It's just a level of engineering design, it's a little further down the road.
For time constraint purposes?
And cost. These are all issues that are going to be addressed, and you'd like to address all of these kind of things as you hit your final approvals, and you're getting ready for building permits. Because over time, codes upgrading, there are a lot of changes, we're probably, I don't want to put a timeframe on it, but we still have to go for funding for the project, so it could be a year, it could be 18 months before we're really at, where we're doing the final, final plaque, and getting ready for building permits. So, it's just, it's kind of, don't get to it, that's our concept, we'll definitely address it. So you're saying you can address this as part of the final plaque?
Okay.
And which one, 19, 20, or was it 21?
Uh, sorry, 19, 21.
Oh, yeah.
34.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, Colin is, and MRB, then, are you going to sort of assess this from a technical and planning standpoint to advise us whether this makes sense or not?
Yes, we will. I will be discussing this with plans and some of the other rubber teams, make sure that we're in agreeance of that. Or if we want maybe, say, parts of it to be addressed now, and then just say, some of it will be addressed later.
So you can fly me, since we're down the floor.
However, at the end of the day, it is up to the board to decide which they want to address when, or even.
I'd like to have your minutes.
And I, just so the board knows, it's very common to have a number of stormwater conditions that they final design, especially because what is actually encountered when you put the shovel in the ground may be different than what your soil geometry and your geo-testing might suspect. But I and HS is very familiar with the form of stormwater agreement that you see here, because it's the same one that Susan and I use at the time. So you should be familiar with it, three robust, there's tax assessment rights and all sorts of things to make sure, if you don't fix it, the village can add the cost, so that's the agreement that'll be covering some of this issue.
Okay.
Okay, two more. 50, I think that seems really good. Give me to the village.
Yeah, so we had a comment requesting that the village actually grant the use of the back through NHS for the low ground stormwater management system that's underneath the now publicly dedicated road that ties into South Street. I had a meeting with Dustin Banderz, the highway superintendent, earlier this month, reviewed, we're going over flow testing of the water system itself and everything. We had a discussion about the dedication of that roadway, wanted to make sure that he was aware that there is stormwater practice there, and asked if he, as the village rep, was comfortable in taking that over traditionally, that would be dedicated to the municipality. in taking that over traditionally, that would be dedicated to municipality, they would then operate and maintain it. He did email me back saying he was fine with taking those over, so I have a copy of that email that's helping from the board. That's a board decision versus his decision, we respect that, but we just want clarity as to which direction to go, or we change the drawings to put an easement on the platform.
If you reported a copy of that email to us, that'd be great.
Okay, so that one is again, just a follow-up, but the answer on that one, when we respond next month, may be, we anticipate that the village will take over that underground detention, and therefore there will be no listed, because you're under the law.
Right.
All right, and then 53 is the last one.
Yeah, that was a request to provide a central light access path drive on the top of a burn around the large wetland and the turnaround. Currently, 11 feet, we can make it 12 feet wide and provide a turnaround. The portion that we just want clarification on is capable of withstand any heavy equipment. Traditionally, practices, we don't pave these, we don't put gravel now, the only real truck, you know, equipment that would need to be added for maintenance is really a pickup truck or an excavator or something like that, so traditionally, if there's a burn, if a dam would be, you know, beefy enough, we'll design that so that people withstand that traffic. So the intention in the response to that comment is not to add more paving or any sort of, any kind of a pathway or roadway, we could certainly widen it, we could certainly provide a turnaround.
So that really is just, we want to make sure there's enough room, and we want to make sure that's going to be able to handle any maintenance vehicles that need to, and usually that is just an excavator or something like that. And yeah, if you're happy with, you know, the effect itself is going to be good enough to support an excavator, I'd like that.
Yeah, I mean, as an example, we help to manage and inspect the second largest dam in the New York State, Virgil Creek Dam and Drive, and that is an earth dam, that has about 20 foot wide crest, still way, and the kind of driving construction equipment and pickup trucks and everything utilizes a top of burn, it's not paved, so it'd be very similar, but very much, much smaller, we're not impeding as much as that dam, yeah, so we have very successfully seen installations where there isn't a bank, you know, in the town.
I would have been very surprised if you were composing, I really don't get it.
Do you have some comments on the board?
One thing I noticed, this goes back to the lighting section, somewhere between the last plan and this plan, we've lost the lighting on the walkway to the north.
I think that's right, so, sorry, did that come as a surprise? So the primary ADA accessible and primary path connection to South Street is that of the South Street connector road, I believe, segment C, north of 52, south of 50 South Street. So that's a lit page, and the idea is, there's been a lot of talk about the relative usage and materiality of the northeast connection between South Street and developing. The more we look at this, the more we think that it should be considered a seasonal path, that it's more or less a looking path than nature, it's not intended to be an ADA accessible path, and insofar that there have been, I'll put it on me as interpretation of concerns potentially for perception of safety, we felt that it would be better to make a clear statement as to what the primary path connection to South Street is, which is the sidewalk path that runs along the roadway, and that this is not auxiliary recreational amenity that many people may use because it might, in a first season, be the most direct path to points of interest to the north and east, but it's not meant to be an equivalent to the sidewalk connection.
I know, I know it's not meant to be, but I have a feeling you're going to be surprised and against the audience.
John, was that the one you were suggesting to chip, a bit more to?
A firmer base.
A firmer base than what is currently there?
Than what is currently?
Yeah, there is a bit of a collision course now with a parking lot of proposed school very close to that pattern, so it isn't quite, like, it isn't quite a scenic bandwidth.
So while I think it's clear to me that I wouldn't go necessarily, or I pass up my old res, walk through Smith Woods at night, I can't think of any other pathways that are unlit in our village such that a person would walk that isn't lit.
Along the lake.
Along what lake?
Hours.
Right, but again, I'm not trying to get to my home.
No.
But I think in defining, I mean, I don't need to be precious about semantics, but I think your equivalent to Smith is exactly that, it's a recreational amenity that we recognize people might see as a desirable path, but you know, in the summer, when the sun sets at nine, it's a different situation than when the sun sets at four o'clock, you know, in shoulder seasons.
Yeah, here's my problem is that like, in order to get a stoplight on 96, DOT waits to see how many terrible accidents there are before they put up this stoplight. So is that the situation? Because it will be used, people will walk, people just will, because it's clearly, like Smith Woods is to some houses, but only if they're going to go to the church, right? So this is a different thing, I think it's something that we should think about a little bit, and I don't know what the answer is, and the answer is, there are enough foot candles coming from neighboring lights that it's not as poorly lit as I think, and maybe two left most would be okay, at the cost, like, you don't want to end up by INHS or Claudia because someone's identified on a pathway that they use in a world that sucks, John would say that. Okay.
Okay, those are the things we just wanted to cover, so that's really helpful. The, in our acre submittal, we did, because the board has been very methodical in the secret process, so we did give you updates to part one, based on the things that have changed since we completed the secret process, we spelled it out in tremendous detail, you can review it if you like, but at the end of the day, they're all relatively, they are, they are all very minor. We changed the name of the project, that's got to be reflected on the table, we had in 50 South Street, all the acres that were changes, things like that.
Any one question, I think I've brought this up several times, I hope, and I've not seen much yet, but are there plans for alternative lighting for this project?
So we discussed energy a little bit, why don't we give an update, because I heard you mentioned it last night.
I was, I was here for us.
Okay.
So.
Mine seemed like I wasn't.
The project will be all electric, at this point, we are planning on using air source heat pumps.
Okay.
We, I mean, this is, great, this is the rental portion, I'm not seeing for sure yet at this time. The, we're also investigating still, possibly attempting to get to net zero, looking at passive house, looking at geothermal, this is all a big cost puzzle that has to do with all the cost of installation, the incentives, the tax credits, all this is, it's a puzzle. So we're still working through that a little bit, but we can at least say definitely air source heat pumps, and we are also looking into off-site solar.
Okay, and definitely electric, you said, and that's just for the rentals, so what about affordable to market? Can you make determinations about that?
They're affordable.
Unfortunately, sorry, also, also electric.
Great, okay.
So everything I can issue, we're doing.
Yes.
And then you put the nursery school.
It does, okay.
So, that's where we're going, at least from our side.
Okay, thank you, while we're talking about the comments, and we're getting before we move on to maybe hearing some more things from the guy, Colin, are there things you'd like to add as our, any other suggestions?
Here's your, quote unquote. So I think the big thing I want to point out for tonight is that on the subject of stormwater, what are the primary things with the stormwater, is requirement to have the post-run rate be equal to or less than the existing conditions, and that goes for each point of analysis, which is the, where your runoff is going to.
Is that true?
And INHS has actually published this, there is a issue with the discharge into South Street exceeding the existing conditions, and my understanding that they're still working on trying to get that back down to at least meeting existing conditions, so figure that's worth pointing out.
And I'd like to say for the public, because we hear the word South Street, and we pay attention to all our streets, but we definitely pay attention to South Street, somebody wants to reference that, that's in the NAC6 2019, this is in the middle from the applicant, and it is page one letter from Andrew Sharaba, so you can find that comment there if you want to go see it.
So one thing would be, the plans that we noticed is that there is actually an increase in impervious area between the previous middle and the current middle, the increase seems to be about 0.68 acres. What we noticed is that the school size has actually gone down, I believe, in four sides, parking has gone down from 152 to 147 spaces.
I'm sorry, could you record the impervious surface, please?
0.68 acre.
Thank you.
And on that subject of impervious area, if you look at comments 11, 12, and 13, we pointed out the areas that we may benefit from potential impervious area protection or could have some help productions applied, and that's mainly that both two lots with the parking in back of structures, the sidewalk is currently shown running along the entire area of the parking lot, when in our, in, if we're looking to be a low-traffic area, just a small residential parking lot, does the sidewalk need to fully extend along that whole, you know, parking lot aisle area? The apartment building, there is a large segment of impervious area right to the south of it, and the nursery folder does seem to be a bit of an impervious area there, for safety, for children to be concerned too. So we want to bring those areas up to sort of attention to take a look at, figure out.
And those are what, those are what account for the third acre?
No.
Those are solutions, I think, that MRB is suggesting could help bring the numbers back down.
Those would not make the, you know, those would not change impervious area much, but if every little bit helps, then.
In our letter, we set forth the major things that increased, and if I'm not mistaken, it was a lot of additional sidewalk, parking down, sidewalks went up, we also use this a 15% assumption for the market rate lots, that's where a lot of it comes from, that may or may not ever materialize, but it's designed, the stormwater is designed to handle that, and it was a little, parking access.
Right, right. And so that, that notion of.
I can respond, sorry.
Please do.
To 11 through 13.
Great, yeah.
Just, if I could, so lots tuned for, that's exactly right, so the sidewalks currently as shown in the last submittal run along the south side, basically the half of the parking spaces, we'll reconfigure them to run basically permanently, but the only concern and consideration that will factor in there is that the plows will most certainly basically come through plowed to the end from east to west, so we're just looking at the new lots of the number of site design there, and so that sidewalks are basically, it's not accurate.
I have a question, one of, this was, I think, maybe possibly three, four meetings ago, the question arose about, you know, how very heavy rains, more dramatic than we've seen, and that holding tanks or holding spaces, if they overflow, basically end up kind of in the neighborhood fields, and the neighborhood, the people have come here many times and said they have extremely poor absorbing soil there, maybe one of the reasons that was never farmed in any grand way, as so many other acres were around here, there's a lot of, you know, compacted play. So going back to that original question, if we do have these unpredictably heavy rains and we do overflow, ultimately where does all this end up? Lake Hume, right, in our lake, correct?
So if, if stormwater changes dramatically, your whole village is going to have a problem.
Oh, sure.
Because it was designed before stormwater requirements.
Yes, but this, this 20 acres is.
If we're talking about our 20 acres, we have overdesigned the stormwater capacity handling, and the treatment, if you just start some of the pieces that go through the treatment, stormwater design has gotten really complex, so there's pre-treatment, treatment, and then discharge, all set by state D C, all taking it down.
And that's the D C's latest requirements, the current ones?
Yes.
Okay.
And so what we've also talked about is, if that system, if Andy and MRB are wrong, and that system doesn't adequately handle the stormwater, state law requires them to come in and fix it, and because the entire site will be owned by INHS, other than the market rate lots, we've got the developer, who's got to own that property long-term because of the tax credits for the 40,000, we've got the developer, quote-unquote, on the hook, you're going to have a fairly aggressive stormwater maintenance agreement, because I've seen the one they have done, and the town, the village will have an awful lot of rights and ability to fix anything that's wrong, if something dramatically goes wrong, down the road, climate change, a lot of additional rain, or our engineers will be completely wrong, none of which we would expect, critical in the outcome.
And I am, I am interested in hearing Ryan's reply to that comment, but before, since you've been sidetracked, this is, this is in keeping with something that was going to be one of my questions, which is, this increase in impervious surface does not change, or do we hit some threshold by increasing 0.68 acres on something that we were measuring about the amount of impervious? Okay, because then the follow-up to that was, if we are admittedly in a poorly drained soil, what is more predictable than impervious surface and you can direct the water, something that we sort of touched upon in other, in other conversations, so as much as we don't want to paint it to save it, right, what are we really super worried about on a site that doesn't drain, when you could control the water better with better drainage practices?
Well, when it comes to impervious, instance, impervious, the modeling for both is actually the same at the end of the day, it's just the modeling basically taking into account how much is expected to run off of that surface, not necessarily how easily it can be, you know, determined where it will go, even if you think about it grassmine swale, it's quite clear where the swale will end up, it's just how does it get there, how fast does it get there? Impervious surfaces tend to allow rainwater to move a lot faster, again, that higher rate of discharge.
Yeah.
And the impervious surface can also collect debris of pollutants and things like that a lot more than, say, grassy field wood, the grass itself can act as a very, very light duty filter, in fact, that is one of the D C practices is to put in filters, which was basically just a.
Yeah, we've all seen the press talk, at the end of the day, yeah.
So there is something to be said anyway for impervious area, but at the same time, impervious also does have the advantage of being a blockable surface.
So I guess the thought to that, thank you, is, is MRB concerned about the increase of 0.68 acres of impervious surface?
They still meet the minimum requirements that they need to meet.
Okay. So I want to, I just want our board and myself to be clear, but is it because we were super hot about impervious surface for a while, and maybe we need to be, or maybe we don't need to be, and looking at changing all these plans that does?
Basically, it's because of the fact that, yes, stormwater has been a big topic for this board, and impervious area has been a big topic for this board, and we did have those variances granted.
Right.
With, you know, some of that was to move, you know, to reduce the driveway lights and things like that, so we felt it was worth bringing up. Are we necessarily concerned about it from a stormwater standpoint? Then again, we're being the minerals, we're doing about the same as much as we were doing before, so it's not really much a change in the performance for lighting and health, it's just, are you guys happy with the impervious area that's being challenged? It's just, are you guys happy with the impervious area that's being shown?
Right, okay.
I have seen very large amounts of water sitting on South Street in big puddles, sometimes running, sometimes idle, but large deposits that aren't really moving. And I myself currently am battling the, and working actually with the high school to clean up our ponds, they're in terrible shape. The two collecting ponds on the other side of Route 96 are completely contaminated. The school pond is, and the back of Fern Dairy is not maintaining anything that they should have. So we took photographs, went back to the high school, showed them all this, and working with the new principal there. But we have huge problems of pollution, of black poisonous algae coming in through the school pond into ours, and then of course it ends up in Kugel Lake. Everything ends up in Kugel Lake, so we have to be extremely careful. What we do, how we do it, I'm happy to hear about the duplex filtering system. But already, South Street is, on a rainy day, very compromised by standing water and running water. So if we add more to that, it just, and then brings salt into the collecting ponds, which is another issue.
That's why they're going to address South Street, because they can't add more to it.
The what?
That's why they're going to address the South Street runoff, because they can't add more to it.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, okay, Ryan.
Can I just clarify one too? Because I want, I just want to, we talked about the majority of the site going to the large wetland, environmental filtration, that's 90% of the area. The South Street increase is very small, pretty common, but we have to actually address that, okay? But we're going beyond actually meeting the minimums for what's going to be leaving the site from runoff from this large pond. I haven't mentioned extra capacity. Right now, with the revised calculations, you know, one-year storms, which are kind of more frequent storms, we're reducing runoff rates by 50% currently. A 10-year storm, 70%, and 100-year storm, which is the biggest storm required to design to, reducing by close to 40%. So we're trying to keep it very robust. So, you know, in that sense, where we can't, you know, go beyond the minimums, that's what we try to evolve, so.
I think that's recognized, it doesn't hurt to say as much as you want, for sure. I think that's recognized. I will say that it would be hard, if we're looking at some conditions that we might place, if we were to consider preliminary approval versus not, it would be hard for us to say we haven't sorted out South Street runoff and write preliminary approval. I think that people who live on South Street have been very engaged in this process for every reason, and that would be inappropriate, okay?
You sure?
Molly, did you want to go?
Okay, so we left off on number 12. There is what to do.
Oh, yes.
Most people would appear to be a very, perhaps unnecessary, large area at the core of the building. So it would be wings in the core, in the centerpiece. So directly south of the core of the multifamily building is a large paid area. The reason that large paid area is provided is for fire truck department access to the building. One of the subsequent comments that MRP group has asked for is turning and emergency vehicle circulation diagrams, which will be part of our subsequent submissions, that you'll see that it will be designated as such.
Okay.
Chair of discussion, please.
Yes.
As far as you...
Oh, without, without farthing.
Has there, has there a question?
Okay.
He is near close to the note.
Yeah, okay.
13?
Okay, 13 is similar to number 11, this is a minor, just extent of impervious surface, in this case, concrete sidewalk that is leading the area directly east of the angle of parking in Center Island, if you will, of the nursery school parking lot. There is a straight clean line tangent of concrete sidewalk that can be reduced as further recommendation. We intend to enact that and to reduce it.
Okay.
To just provide the minimum necessary wheelchair or other disabled person access to the primary route.
Okay, Colin, did you get, Colin note on that one?
Yeah, sorry, and if I might just, so there's a lot on 13. There's also, I mentioned that the sidewalks should be reduced to five feet wherever necessary. There were moments where we were showing larger winds, I believe, eight feet, directly adjacent to the nursery school, and that was the idea of school group.
Convening outside to say?
Yes, basically, you know, whether it be parent pickup, drop-off, or whether it be school groups getting together outside the building to, you know, prepare for their lockdown on South Street or what have you.
Sure.
So that being said, I think we'll look at reducing that further, despite what I just said.
Though, I think providing one of those moments does make sense. So having watched school kids line up on Main Street, then the yard we're going to. So I don't know if it's a huge, huge page or not, but it's a good point.
And then there's just a recommendation that the material choice could be utilized, that we could utilize permeable papers or impervious materials in lieu of conventional asphalt or concrete. We've entered into that conversation at the very early stages of design with this project and because of some soils being relatively poor during high-water tables, it's just not deemed to be a very effective stormwater management practice.
We were more suggesting less of the D C stormwater practice, more just a, still have a nice walking surface, but not adding to the total impervious. That was the consideration there. Not so much be, let's add in filtering layers below and big storage layer below.
Understood, okay. Well, we'll look at it again, I mean, we've had, there have been discussions all along about using...
Well, because to what extent of view will then it just pool?
Yeah, it just turns to, like, puddles, right?
On top.
Impervious, which is the last thing.
Well, there are, sorry, there are different types of systems. I mean, I, to be totally candid about it, my largest reservation in our rate, adopting those systems, are that they come with a maintenance regime. And so they're only as effective as the maintenance regime and to have a relatively small area of permeable papers. They oftentimes require special machinery, vacuums, just a much higher level of maintenance. And so, you know, we've been artful and microbating in looking at how to pitch impervious pavement towards permeable surfaces, not vegetated areas, and thus decreasing the time of concentration so we don't have everything going straight to the sewers as quickly as possible, wherever possible. I mean, there's, there's a lot of open space on the site, and we've tried to really artfully look at the stormwater runoff patterns to make it as progressive as possible.
One of the earliest permeable parking lots in this area was built on our canal in Linn. And it was permeable for all of three years. And then everything infilled with sand, debris, et cetera.
What side, where, what side are you referring to?
It is on Inland Island, I think on the side of...
In Ithaca? Yeah, oh, Ithaca.
In Ithaca, not here.
Sorry, I was like, we have Inland?
But it, what it was designed to do, it only did for a short time. In other words, it's not the perfect solution. We talk about it as, it's a great idea, but unless we design it better, in that sense, the open locks with the grass in it are nicer looking and work better. But they're expensive, and as somebody said, they take a lot of maintenance. You have to keep them down. So nothing's perfect yet, maybe next week.
All right, so, and our plan will be, of course, as we've done with all of the MRP contractors, we'll set forth a detailed explanation in response to each one, and update the plans accordingly and submit those. And that's really our next step. So, because the board, I guess I'll ask, does the board have other comments or thoughts relative to, or maybe anything we should know as we're responding to those?
We might in a moment, after hearing a little bit from God. Do you have anything on your minds right now? Friends, okay.
I guess I'd, I'd too overcompensate for that.
You have what?
I have to overcompensate for that. Just a note, we do want to see the, some more correspondence with the D P W supervisor. I know a lot is going to be going on. This is comment 24. We know that there is, that we're familiar with understanding that some water may can be allowed under the roadway, however you want. We just want to make sure that the supervisor is satisfied with the land ups. And that is how you, how much is under new roadways out of the roadway.
We want to do another kind of conference call like we did last time. So you guys are in on the conversation, or is it adequate for me to meet with Dustin and provide you with an email or a letter?
I think an email or a letter is probably going to be fine. I will get back to you on that if, if I hear anything otherwise in my discussions with my team.
Sure.
And then the last thing I want to bring up is just the, we did receive a photometrics plan. However, we would like to see just a little more labeling of the contours, showing additional contours and showing the lighting beyond just outside the road, or just beyond just inside of the roadway. Looked like the actual labeling was only in the roadway itself.
It was, it was, yeah. And we've already been in contact with our driving photometrics designer. We're sorry for making a lot of the remarks last year. I believe that was all I had.
Okay, thank you. Got it, not too bad.
I just made the trigger set.
What I've tried to do is look at your, sort of, your big three, and that is your zoning, specifically your site plan review requirements, which are very largely set forth in section 12. The prior environmental review, which, as things change, as was noted, you have to sort of keep track and see whether anything will trigger a supplemental review and whether that supplemental review might change how you have weighted the potential impact or how you might try to mitigate the potential impact. And the environmental review did have some conditions that were anticipated. They still exist, but we do need to have a tool for tracking to make sure these things follow through from concept to ink. And then your subdivision planning, because subdivision planning is a different thing. Now, with that said, a lot of these have significant overlap. When you look at a subdivision plat, one of the things that you normally would look at is street layouts. If roadway is having its light, well, those are also critical elements in site plan review, and they're also hard for you to see here. So rather than say it three times, I've really tried to put them into sort of a rational order and let things flow out with site planning, because site planning is really your, in some respects, your most effective discretionary tool. It is, in some respects, where you have your broadest authority, you can take a whole look. As we learned, or as we discussed, subdivision plating really has to do with sort of lot layouts and not necessarily with the individual structures out of lot. An environmental review, you may look at impacts, but impacts in terms of design and facility use are not always covered by CEPR. So in subdivision plating, I've tried to create, not a restatement of the subdivision law, but just the bullet points and the main things that you have to look at. So when you go back to the subdivision law, you can look at, okay, what does this section actually say when we start addressing things like lot sizes and lot layouts? You know, just the streets, street names, street signage, and sign review generally. If there's going to be any kind of development signs, identification signs, wayfaring signs, you have some sign rules in zoning, that should be part of what you're looking at. Where are they, what are the function of the survey? Sidewalks and trails, open green space, as well as how you make sure that you have conditions imposed that protect green spaces and trees and natural features that you either want to restrict use of or preserve or enhance somehow. And again, these are concepts that are laid out in different areas of your subdivision law. And open space has been, you know, a big part of what the discussion here is even including that what is deviated. Your utility locations, what easements are needed for them, and what dedications are required, that's something that you're going to need to develop conditions for. For instance, water lines, usually where a lot of the areas are usually dedicated with public roads, but here we might have, I mean, we'll have some water lines that are going to be along private roads or that may run areas other than roads. Who's going to hold them, who's going to be responsible for them? Where does the village obligation end? That should be defined, you know, within the conditions and within the dedication documents and easements themselves. Roadway designs, classifications, and they also need to be monumented and dedicated. All street, a lot of streets stand in the dark, you have something called a street monument. You have to identify where the corner is. You may not necessarily know it unless you've done it a long, long time or just intuitively understand it, but blacktop is really sort of liquid. And a lot of road surfaces, like gravel, they move. As cars go around the curve, they push the materials towards the outside. And if you've had a subdivision in your place for long enough, what you eventually find sometimes is that the road's no longer within the roadway right away. So you have to have those monuments there, so, you know, your marketing where title is, where the road should be, et cetera, it's required by state laws.
Those monuments aren't paper documentation, are they, physical?
No, they're physical things that are put in the ground.
Oh, okay, like my, or my property, sort of thing.
Right, they'll be PK nails, older tools, where they'd actually take little axes and put them on their side, because the type of steel would last forever. Highway monuments are very common along state highways. You'll see little concrete settings in the ground. And that's how DOT will actually do a lot of acquisition that will refer to highway numbers and monument numbers, unless you, unless you're a DOT engineer or surveyor. It's not easy to follow, but all of that's required, and so that's the things we'll look at. Your subdivision law also wants lots, certain lots and certain features labeled. So whether it's A, one, whatever, so that you can easily describe them, easily deal with them. Again, I've included some references like section 441 there, so you can go back and look at it and not fish around for where it is. As-built diagrams, as-built surveys, when you do particularly subdivisions, and most especially the road, you have an area where the road is supposed to go. And 99, 999 times out of 1,000 times, that road is built within millimeters of where it's designed to be built. But what you want after it's built is an actual as-built survey of where exactly is the road, because that's going to be the tool that identifies where the utility lines are, where the thing before you dig, people know where to go looking. And on very rare occasions, we have glitches. And, you know, if there's a change and the asphalt shows the change, great, that's the really important tool, and your law requires it. Again, I put in the reference to section 450. The general process for the subdivision plating is going to be to examine secret, to look at preliminary plat impact changes. If you approve the preliminary plat, obviously, there's going to be some conditions. You're going to want to identify any waivers that were granted, including as-to die lines, which I think we're still on a roll of those. And you also, if they're going to go that direction, I guess they would, you want to do some type of analysis or valuation of what the improvement bond will be to allow the final plat to proceed, if the final plat is going to be approved before all the infrastructure is developed. That should probably be covered, and again, it gave you the section reference. And then I think when you get into a final plat situation, because final plats and final site plans are always, you know, very slight in front of preliminary, it's very rare that they match up 100%. What you're looking for is substantial requirements. It's generally a good practice, generally recognized, since you have the time, because since you're going to have a public area. Get an updated 239 from the county, so there's no questions there. Because what a county might consider a significant change and what you might consider a significant change could be two different things, because they're reviewing under a different standard. And normally, they're very prompt on that. It's not mandated, it's just a good practice generally.
I see Morgan had a good note on that, so.
On the environmental review, some of the issues that came up were dusting noise mitigation and regulation of hours of construction to try to reduce impacts in nearby areas. Stormwater disturbance controls, both temporary and permanent controls for your SWPs and your final stormwater plans. I think you have to take into account and consider what changes in road and site changes at 50 South Street, whether that's, you're going to be reweighing, whether those changes reduce your impacts or increase your impacts. And, you know, depending on where you step off the bus, you might have a different feeling about that. There was discussion about there would be ACE permitting, and people have different names for it, R B Corvenger. I've always called it ACE, but, and there was a strong notation and generally no disturbance around much of the wetlands. So that was noted in environmental, we... We will need what I call a summer, a storm operation management reporting agreement. There was discussion about, this came up earlier, green building energy efficiency, Tuckins County Energy Guidelines, which I think you should anticipate receiving from the county again with 239. And the general process here is basically, you're going to look to determine whether or not a supplemental review is required based on changes. And if so, then you'll have to determine whether or not that supplemental review has altered how you would weigh or mitigate impacts. If anything moves from small or no impact to moderate, to large impact, then your overall SEER determination will change. So that's something you have to look at. And for final approvals, it's part of the process. You'll be doing it unless there's absolutely no change. And that's pretty rare. Site plan review, section 812.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. The change that might have occurred does not mean you're doing a full SEER review.
No, no, you're doing a supplemental review to evaluate whether or not they change.
And that review is if observation, discussion, whatever? Or is there an actual, like step-by-step of these things?
It would depend on how you look at them. Generally, if the changes are not material and significant and are, for instance, if you change, if you change a design element or a stormwater element to further mitigate impacts. So if you reduce the size of something, technically, it's a change. It might trigger a supplemental review or a SEER since you've actually reduced the likelihood of harmful negative environmental impact. You wouldn't do a supplemental review.
Okay.
Okay, but you would do the evaluation determining whether you should do a review.
Okay.
Okay. So site plan review under section 812. I did new it signs, compliance, and locations. That's the only thing I repeated because you can have different signs for subdivision in streets than you can in site planning. There might be a sign on the community center or a sign for the nursery school that would fall under a zoning category that's different and wouldn't necessarily be triggered in site plan. Plants gaping in trees, open spaces and buffers and screening. And you do have a specific rule about screening waste depositories, whatever they are, whether they're totes, whether they're deposit areas or whether they're actual dumpsters. Lighting and IDSA. IDSA, okay, I don't know if you're going to specifically impose International Dark Sky Association 200 Arizona standards, but clearly, you're going to be looking at lumieres, light heights, overall lighting, light impact patterns. And I think eventually, you'll start getting into questions on kelter gradient of bulbs. Yellow light is much softer for the eyes, less disturbing to wildlife, but it also provides less visual acuity for public safety at night. You know, you can see that if you compare 6,000 watt bulb that looks more like daylight to 3,000 watt bulb, it looks more like a low power. So there's a trade-off there and you'll be looking at some of that. Again, one of the standards in site plan is to try to keep roof lines clean to the extent possible. The village has a rule, doesn't want to see lots of antennas and things sticking off all roof lines. It wants nice, you know, relatively clean roof lines. Obviously, chimneys are an integral part of the building. That's not what they're talking about. But you try to keep it clean to the extent possible. That's in your site plan. Architectural and design issues, materials, colors. The village does have a focus on things that look like stone and wood and stone and wood and prefers natural materials. Obviously, it's not an absolute rule. There's nothing about an asphalt shade that's truly natural. But a big one is obviously vehicle pedestrian and bicycle circulation controls, including parking and land banking for parking. If that's still the concept under consideration. The ZBA did not require it. They left it to this board to make a determination on like that was going to be done. Fire emergency service access and then Public Transportation Act, bus stops and ride share options were also things that came up in previous review in your site plans. Streets gaping, which I think was a part of what went to the ZBA, the look and feel type of thing, creating a neighborhood, trying to conform with what the streets gaping is in nearby areas. Stormwater management, mitigation in drainage, ditches, curves, drains, and culverts. These all dovetail very much with subdivision planning because subdivisions are going to have driveways and culverts are going to go under them. All those systems have to connect. Trying to identify places and to promote consistency with master planning and your comprehensive plan. Master plans and comprehensive plans are different things, but they're related. Your affordable housing issues. Some municipalities consider conditions to try to guarantee that a certain model of affordable housing will always be there. What happens if it isn't? I'm not sure that's critical here because you have INHS as the owner. It's not a private company. It has owner that might convert it after a few years with an...
And then that are affordable housing requirements by area.
I'm just saying that, that's, I'm just laying out the different options and things that are in site planning. And this can be sort of like a how-to guide. It's not completely comprehensive. There are other things on here. I may go crazy on stormwater detail. That's your ballpark in years. But it's sort of like a how-to guide. Here are the main points that have come up over the past and within your law for impact analysis, site mitigation conditions. Many of them are going to be well incorporated within the final plans. You don't need to restate any paragraph conditions on lights, angles of the lumiere or the type of bulb if you've got full spec sheets that meet with your approval. That would become the requirement for the entire project. But there are sometimes lighting conditions that come in, you know, in addition. I don't know what it would be here, but it could. I think you have, you know, the nursery school and the community center are slightly different uses than the main residential. I think a lot of those conditions are already built into some of the plans and planning, but you're going to want to look at that. I think that there was a lot of discussion about parking flow when you discuss sidewalk widths. There's things like that that could come up. And then in terms of the general process, again, you're going to identify compliance conditions that are required, needs to be done to meet your standards. Identify your waivers, including timelines. Verify that you're public hearing. Your 239 review and SEER have been intended to. And, you know, sort of follow up because it came up earlier that there's been discussion with codes, with fire, with DPW, with the engineers to make sure that the key infrastructure advisors to the village planning board have had their say and have a subtle look and seen the final versions. You're going to determine substantial compliance with the completed preliminary final site plan. And again, I've put all the section numbers in these, your, your name. You're going to set forth the required conditions and modifications for a site plan. And at the end, I basically set forth a little snippet. It's not all the procedure, but the 180-day timeline from preliminary, from final preliminary site plan to final site plan. I've set forth that timeline. I've set forth how you would consider and look at issues that have been changed and whether or not they trigger a full review. Some of the issues that were brought up earlier would trigger a review. If, for instance, market greenhouse comes in and their design has to be evaluated to make sure it's consistent. And you have review authority on that. And again, there are some things that are required, like proof of permit applications, proposed structure, construction schedule, and a demonstration by the applicant that their final site plan is in compliance with the preliminary site plan and its conditions. So again, this is a very short, sort of, it's intended to be a guideline. It's not intended to be comprehensive. I'm fully expecting that people want to add to it.
The paragraph numbers, what document do the paragraph numbers refer to?
Like this 812.2?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's zoning. The site plan review is all under the zoning section 812.
Of the...
Out of the...
Of our village, yes.
Of this all?
Right, so the subdivision planning is our, the subdivision law or subdivision requirements. And there's some crossover in and out of other areas. Obviously, stormwater standalone. You know, some of your other rules are a bit standalone. But this is meant to really sort of be the sort of guide to look at the types of issues that have, A, already been identified and B, that are normally looked at to check the box that, okay, this is adequately covered in the plans or it's not. And again, I think it's a work of value. Give it a grower as time goes.
Thank you. And again, to be clear, this is, this is an outline of the things we should be looking at. It doesn't address whether or not we have it. I've now already talked about those topics. It's a thing to be...
Yeah, a lot of it you already have talked about. That's why it's on the list. So, you know, a lot of this has been talked about and a lot of this is already about giving plans.
Right.
So it's not like you're going to have, hopefully, you're not going to run through the alphabet and start listing condition A, A, condition B. Believe me, I see that more often than... I think 80% of this is already in here. Whether it's in here to your satisfaction, and again, within the scope of the law, you can't just make it up and act based on what you're authorized to review. That's what you determine. And maybe if you look at one of these, you go, check it's covered. You don't even discuss the other one. But that's a decision for you as the planning board. I put it on here because I think you should look at it.
Yeah, and clearly, we need this because we all tried to get through my staff at putting that together, which made so much sense when I typed it up and then I got here and it's like, oh, so thanks, God.
It's, it's...
It's hard to get all into words sometimes, like whether, you know, so this is great. Does anyone have any things they'd like to ask, okay? Okay, really good, thank you.
Paper, 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 paper. We can be environmentally friendly if we could kill less trees, yes.
Who's going to start that hemp farm in Stubein County? Could use it, okay. Great, well, Board, do you want to, I mean, we're starting public comment at 8:35. Do you want to, do we have anything we'd like to address with each other about this, these topics, according to a lot of other topics?
Actually, one thing I, you might enlarge on, Guy, is the timetables stuff.
Okay. The timetables that run between the preliminary, blue bullet tile?
The general, yeah, well, the general process.
Site plan review, number four, general process.
Yeah, number, number three and number four of this.
Should be happier if that was three, four, five, and six in one of those sequential breakdowns? Okay, no problem.
Okay. Okay, wow. So at this time, we'll take public comment. Three, 15 minutes scheduled. I'm not sure if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, but we're happy to hear you now. Is there anyone like to ask some jackass? Yeah, you said it.
You would expect more luck.
No, and I'd like, actually, someone said, you know, the town of Anisius calls it the privilege of the floor. Sir, I invite you to enjoy the privilege of the floor.
Yeah, the... Just a few things that kind of went by Board who are listening. And so far, I see that 46 of the rental units are basically what's going to be approved at the preliminary plat, at the for sale, for the market rates. So basically, that's your approving rental units. Claudia said in the text that she's, some of her lots will be multi-units and some of which may or may not be owner occupied, which are more rentals that will be approving now, preventing the future. Now, in total, impermeable surfaces have increased since the variance was granted. And one of the big arguments for the variance was the decrease in impermeable surfaces. Now, one building's proximity to the next isn't in zoning ordinance as far as complying with parking. You know, each building has to have its own parking allotment, not just because it's close to another one to be shared. Now, the village is supposedly taking over the underwater retention maintenance. Or I may have gotten that wrong, but I think that's what I heard. And what do these secondary filters filter out? I mean, is it just sediment? Is it, you know, petrochemicals? Is it pesticides? What is the, you know, the filter actually filtering? Now, also, does INHS going to be owning the nursery school and renting it to, or leasing it to the, to the persons that are running? And now, there was mentioned snowplow, you know, pads and whatnot. Well, there's the cul-de-sac at the southern end of the, of the arch. Well, more than likely have snowplowed right to the end of it because there's really no other place. Also, some of it from the parking lot. And that's the emergency vehicle turnaround area, which already does not comply with the zoning ordinance as it stands between the plans that have been submitted and what's in the zoning ordinance. Now, I saw some swales up in Tire, which was under INHS project. And within 15 feet of the drainage creek, there was standing water. So it's, it's a nice idea to have the swales, you know, take care of all the runoff. But in reality, unless the surface or the soil is adequate, it'll just pool there as well. So... That's it for me.
Okay. So I think that, let's just, a couple of these things, I think, Jack. So my understanding is that what we can expect in June for their version of final drawings is the affordable rental units, also the affordable for sale units, which I think you left off in your list. That's what I...
Said that that was later, usually.
Oh, you was right. I thought I wrote, you said that you would have nursery school drawings and then affordable for sale drawings in June. You know, I would not...
Right, those were mine.
Thank you. Okay, good, great. Do you, can you answer, Andy, with the secondary filter, filters filter under the roadway?
Yeah, most of the filters, they filter sediments. They filter nutrients, phosphorus, and nitrogen. They don't filter, they don't filter salt practices. That's, that's, it's... Organics, you know, it's a sediment filtering process. So when you have the sediments going to settle up, you have to use filters.
Okay. And remind us what the owning, leasing structures for the nursery, VZV, INHS?
We will own it and lease it to the nursery school.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public that can make comment? Yes.
Hello, looking on our 40 South Street. Of course, I can't see what you're looking at in terms of the checklist, but I looked at one of those items. South Street is still 20 feet wide, hasn't changed. Article four, section 490.2.8.1 requires South Street, like Blackthor Street, to be 40 feet wide. Mr. Probey have an explanation of village planning history. However, there's no reference of the history of village planning in our actual law or anything that describes it. He had mentioned something about the highway by use law. I did look up that law, and I'm not an attorney, but that references a road with three rods, which doing the math is 49 feet, 6 inches, which is even greater than what our village law requires. So I hope that that is reviewed again. And actually, I think we're doing the process wrong. I don't think Mr. Pro should be answering. I think applicant should be demonstrating to you in their application that they need the village's requirements. It's not up to the village to do that. And it's up to the applicant to prove how they're meeting that. And a traffic study does not equal what's required by our village law. The second point that I brought up last time, Mr. Pro tried to address was the 500 feet reform between streets. He said that Schoolhouse Lane is not an official village street. Again, the village law does not say it has to be an official village street. It says streets between streets. I think we can all agree that Schoolhouse Lane is a street. It attaches... I think we can all agree that Schoolhouse Lane is a street that attaches to a museum, to a residence, to a bus garage, and so forth. So, again, I think that needs to be proved by the applicant, how it's going to meet our village law. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay. Great, thank you, everybody, for your time on that. Okay, we'll be on to old business. We have some fun, wonderful old business regarding the trees that were planted by...
Yes, Ms. Peggy, Ms. Peggy Hane and my neighbor here. And, now, did somebody type up that number for me?
No. Victoria?
I dropped it off, a week ago.
I think Amy's working on that, but she's been here all week.
Yeah, okay. Well, then I'll have to make it up, won't I? So, basically, it was, I call Peggy Hane, I was very grateful to her and her little subcommittee that cleaned up the borders there to both our entrance to the village and to the fairgrounds, which were, after we lost all the big trees, not saying that they were not in great shape, I was a little disappointed that the village attempted, or even township of Ulysses planted smaller, healthier trees between, before we kind of lost everything, because we've always referred to that as our entrance canopy. But now, to wrap this up, so Peggy Hane has done many wonderful things in the past for this village, including the conservatory and other places, orchestrated a small committee, and they got together and they raised the money to buy the plants, cleaned up that whole, what would you call it, that rise up to the fairgrounds and to the verg, the verg thing. By all means, diverge that way. And it's cleaned up, great, the plants were put in, and would you describe what they put in there? Because...
I tried last time, I lost one. There are red bugs, there are cornealian cherries, and crevaux.
Correct.
Yeah, 25.
How tall will these get, some of these?
They'll get to be about 20, 25 feet. They're intended to be below the power lines. That's the controlling factor.
Right, because otherwise they'd be cut from...
Yeah, but the fact is that there will be a second, probably next year, a second phase that will try to restore some of that grandiosity of the old cotwoods. They won't put cotwoods back, but something...
A few taller, more upright.
More robust seems to be the word today.
So, all in all, I think this is a happy conclusion of what was not looking particularly good. And it was very nice group to volunteer. I'm sorry, since I don't have the letter, I thought I would have.
Thought we might be able to sort of all agree and sign it and send it on.
I was hoping we could sign it tonight and send it off, but...
Ms. Morgan has authored to take that up and put it on the appropriate letterhead, if you want to get a copy to her. She will do that.
Leaves, needles, and...
Yeah, there's reasonable coffee sugar, that could be...
Would you like to have a hand, press some paper?
parchment paper.
parchment. Sorry, but that'd be great, but Vicki, will you, why don't you give it directly to Morgan, who I'm sure is quite busy as well, but I'm sure you might have a tiny bit more time to help that.
Okay.
Is there any other old business? And actually, let's try to put a deadline on that, can we? Can we have it for next board meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can we have it, can we have it maybe in advance so that we can read it, so we can just sign the copy and say, thanks so much?
Yeah, I'll try to get it done next week.
Okay, lovely, thanks.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
I do, under new business...
Oh, any other old business?
Oh, old business.
Okay, moving on from old business.
New business. Could we find out who is on our tree committee and a little bit what their assignment is, speaking of trees? We, the mayor just pointed out many people that will be planting trees, working with existing trees. He's just curious what their agenda is.
Yeah, why don't you email the mayor?
I can tell you most of them, I think, right now. Don Oles, Carper, Ben Carper, my son, Michael, Wolford, Karen Powers. But there may be one or two more, but those are the main ones.
It's on the village website. It's on the village website, awesome, it's sort of Carper's project, where he doesn't trust you. On the village website, excellent, thanks for coming to the board.
On new business, another item. I don't know about the timing of this, but I think it's important that we, as a board, weigh in in the process that's going on for the revisions to the zoning bylaw.
For the town?
For the town, no, the village.
Oh, okay.
That's going on currently, I think they're starting off by revising the comprehensive plan. But I've learned a lot by, in the last three or four years, using that bylaw and found the weaknesses and the strengths in it. But I think it would be really good for us as a board to have an interface with that, with that group at some opportunity.
Yeah, so that was something, so remembering that I was chair of that committee for several months, it was talked about, and Steph is still on it, so it all starts beginning a moment, but it was always considered that the planning board could always weigh in whenever they wanted, but it would also be consulted, would have a chance to see some of the final determinations and make comment on that and suggest. Now, that's at one stage, and I think that the representative here at the committee, if the intention is to, you know, maybe the planning board members would like to be invited to attend a specific meeting to make comment?
Well, what I would prefer to see is a dedicated meeting just between the two groups to, and early on, before it's a review rather than, than it's feeding into the system rather than a review of...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably in the now, which, yeah, that's not...
We haven't started any, yeah, called meetings. Everyone's always welcome to those meetings.
But they're just beginning.
And updates from all the meetings and agendas are also on the website.
So EDR didn't fully come into the picture, so they're the firm that's consulting for the review process in recognition of some of the complexities in that the committee is comprised of 10, 10 members of the community with various experience in planning or whatnot. So EDR is helping guide the process of review. They started in April. So it's very, very, I think that you, we could do that. And I would also say, though, that we might want to be, to make the best use of their time, be a little bit more directed in what we think is a board we would want to offer. So, if that's, you know, digging up the old things that we did three years ago, and then we noticed in code and whatnot, to have to give to them to give in the process, maybe give us some time to do that? Okay.
I don't want to just repeat what John said, but, you know, that we have had a fair amount of experience with the way the process works.
Oh, yeah.
And how things mesh. And we've had an opportunity to see how they don't sometimes mesh, or sometimes they conflict, or something got left out. And I think, you know, we could probably save the process a fair amount of time by doing as John suggests and sort of proactively recovering that information that we, you know, gather.
And you both were here when they did the review 12 years ago, or 2020? You weren't? What? I thought you were all these years. And you were...
There's a little hiatus there.
Okay, so would it satisfy to leave Steph as liaison to go back to the committee and say the planning board is interested in coming and give us some time to collect thoughts that we want to share to be...
Yeah, and I think it would be great if as many of us as could could write, actually write things down and deliver.
So, the plan, I think, is that EDR is going to do some interviews with, like, key stakeholders. And it sounds like, how many boards are you meeting, one of those first interviews, stakeholders?
Small suggestion is, they're very open to having people come to the meetings and give whatever input they want. They're very much looking forward to adding input from many different sources. So, if you felt that there was something that you wanted to say or had put in there, or conflict, or whatever, I think, you know, instead of trying to get a whole five bunch of, a bunch of five people together, just go to a meeting and you can say whatever you want.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is, our experience in using the zoning bylaw is a little bit different than the public using the bylaw. So, that's what I just want to weigh in on.
Jack, I think that was his gentle nudge to motivate all the rest of us to come together. So, I think it's a great point, we can all go whenever, and I'm glad that you felt welcome. I think that's great feedback for Steph to take to the committee, yeah.
I felt that it was, they were just looking for input, but whatever was a good source.
Good, good. Any other, new business?
A tiny little baby step that I succeed in it. I can now go flying down Dorsey Hill at eight o'clock and turn left without my truck getting pre-made.
Excellent. Okay, well, if that's that, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move, second.
On paper? I have books, okay, thank you.